Evening, welcome to the August 21st meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you'd like to follow along on our online agenda, the agenda is posted on the district website. I'm now calling this meeting to order at 7:39 PM. Ms. Chires, can you please call the official role for this evening's meeting?
Student Director Winter Clark. President. Director Jennifer Shinoski.
Yeah.
Director Laura Babbitt. Here. Director Mike Chang.
Here.
Vice President Kadija Brown, excuse this evening. President Anavasudev.
Presente. Thank you, Ms. Chires. Now we will approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda? They moved. Moved by Director Shinoski, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Babbitt, all in favor?
Aye.
Or do we have to call the roll, Ms. Chires? Because, okay. All directors in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we will report out from our closed session. Since Director, since Vice President Brown is not here, I will do the closed session report out. For Agenda Item 3.1.1. Phillips v. BUSD, there was a motion to approve the proposed settlement agreement that was moved by Director Chang, seconded by Director Babbitt, and all directors voted in favor. For Agenda Item 3.1.2. Student A vs. BUSD, the board heard an update. For Agenda Item 3.1.1. The board heard an update and provided direction. For Agenda Item 3.2, confidence with legal counsel anticipated litigation. The board heard an update and provided direction. For Agenda Item 3.3, superintendent evaluation, the board discussed and provided direction. For Agenda Item 3.4.1, Dean of Students. There was a motion to approve the staff recommendation that was moved by Director Shinoski, seconded by Director Chang. Director Shinoski, Chang, Brown, and Vasudev voted in favor. Director Babbitt abstained. For Agenda Item 3.4.2. Director of Berkeley Research Evaluation and Assessment, Brea. There was a motion to approve the staff recommendation that was moved by Director Shinoski, seconded by Vice President Brown, and all directors voted in favor. And that concludes the report out from closed session. And now we will hear from our Superintendent Nikita Ford-Morthel.
Thank you, President Vasudev. Good evening, BUSD family. It is a whole bunch of y'all out here tonight, huh? We did, we have officially started the 24-25 school year welcoming our over 9,000 students back into our classrooms. So many folks in the Berkeley community pulled together. This year's theme is hashtag Berkeley Together. Did you all know that? Did you watch the video? Okay, thank you. So many folks pulled together, Berkeley Together, for a smooth and uplifting first day, first few days of the school year. And so I want to take time to thank our phenomenal educators and staff for showing up each day for our students and for all you did, known and unknown, to make sure our classrooms were ready and welcoming. I also want to extend a thank you for our amazing parents, guardians, and caregivers for sending us your very best each day and for being our thoughtful partners. And a special thank you to our students, some of the babies are here in the front row, for giving us a reason to do what we do and to always strive to do it better and better. Speaking of together and getting better, our six, over 600 BUSD families came out to San Pablo Park to be in community and to partake in our annual school supplies giveaway on August 10th. It was our biggest turnout yet. Our OFI staff who organized the event gave out 1,500 bags of school supplies and 1,250 backpacks. Families were able to get free haircuts, so we didn't just make sure they came to school with school supplies, but we made sure they came looking fresh and clean and in style with their beautiful haircuts. Our partners at AC Transit provided information about bus options and how to obtain Clipper cards. There was information from and about our local food pantries and booths that promoted physical health and wellness for both our students and adults alike. Fun food and so much more. I want to thank all of our community partners, the Berkeley Public Schools Fund, SupplyBank.org, the City of Berkeley, Covenant Church, and City Center Church for their support of our students and for starting us off with such a strong and inspiring example of hashtag Berkeley Together. Now, at our last board meeting, I shared with you all that both breakfast and lunch will be available free to all TK through 12 BUSD students this year. I had a lot to say that evening, but I should have said more. Specifically, I should have let you all know that even though both breakfast and lunch meals are free, it is still very, very, very important that you fill out the meal application. This application is much more than just a meal application. By filling out the meal application, you will help BUSD bring much-needed funding, that means dollars, to our schools. Much-needed funding to our schools. But also, it will, if you qualify for free or reduced status through the application process, you can use the district's eligibility letter to obtain other benefits like free broadband service, EBT cards, discounts on exams, and much more. So families were emailed information about these applications, and it also can be found on our district website. So please find it and fill it out if you haven't already. We're excited to be able to offer bus transportation to Longfellow students from the hills of Berkeley as well as from South Berkeley. Our Longfellow shuttle bus service is available for morning drop-off, and it now includes zero period, as well as after-school pickup. We're also working to provide busing for our Longfellow students participating in BUSD after-school programs as well. Although we continue to have a limited number of seats on the shuttle bus, it is our goal to provide transportation to all of our families who need it during this transition. This is a new service to address a new need as a result of a very quick and unexpected change. And so I want to thank the Longfellow families and students for their patience as we launch this new system and mitigate issues that are inherent in most things that are new. A communication was sent out today to families that applied for a seat on the Longfellow bus. So if you are a Longfellow family and you applied, please check your email for that communication. And I also want to, of course, thank the Longfellow team, as well as the amazing folks in our Transportation Department, for the countless hours they have committed to putting these new routes in place and supporting our students and our Longfellow families. Now, as we prioritize getting our Longfellow and other students trans- That. Do that again. Now, as we prioritize getting our Longfellow and other students' transportation to and from school, we are unable right now to confirm transportation to non-BUSD after-school programs at this time. We know that there are a few families in need of transport to City of Berkeley program specifically, and we want you to know that we have been and will continue to be in communication with the City of Berkeley partners to try to respond to this need. We also know that there are a few families still waiting to secure a placement in our BUSD after-school programs. All families who are currently on the waitlist have been encouraged to explore other after-school care options, and you received a letter this week giving you more information. Enrollment in our after-school program is structured so that students whose families are socio-economically disadvantaged, our foster youth, our students experiencing housing insecurity, and our English learners are prioritized. And this prioritization is mandated by the state educational code, and it also aligns with our Berkeley value of equity. Like many districts, BUSD is not able to enroll all student applicants for our after-school program at this time, but we understand that this also creates some level of hardship for our families and remain committed to opening up as many spaces as we are able. Our long-term vision is an after-school program that can offer a place to every Berkeley Unified student who needs care, just as we'd like to be able to respond to the many other diverse needs of our student body and their families. While we are not there yet, we continue to work towards these ends, and we really, really look forward to working with our staff, the board, students, and you, our community partners, and families towards this end this year. Again, in the spirit of the hashtag Berkeley Together. Those are my comments this evening, President Vasudev. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ford-Morthel, for your very thorough comments. Saving me my board comments because yours are very thorough. And now we will move to the public comments component of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating or participating in any physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that's not open to the public, or approaching the dais without permission. Ms. Chires has already explained, there are two opportunities for public comments at each meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we'll encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. You may almost, you may also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during the public comment period. Board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. These are hybrid meetings, so we'll have public commenters in the boardroom and online. We have designated 20 minutes to our in-person speakers. This will be followed by 10 minutes for our online speakers. Anyone online who wishes to make public comments should raise a virtual hand now so Ms. Chires can organize. If you're a student, please put student next to your name, so we call you first. Each public commenter will have up to two minutes tonight to speak, depending on the amount of speakers. Please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of each speaker's lot of time, so time your comments accordingly. I will call your name in the order of speakers per agenda item. To keep things moving, I would like to ask the speaker who is next in line to come forward and wait near the mic. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name incorrectly. Please correct me if I do so. We'll now begin with our public comments in person, and per our tradition, we'll start with our students, and our new student director, Winter Clark, will call our students up.
Hey, I would like to first bring up Yasni Massir. To the podium, you have two minutes.
Mr. Will note that Berkeley never did call for a ceasefire. Our school community can still support Palestine by teaching and learning about it. Carefully worded sympathies are not enough. I will tell you, Israel does not have the right to stand on the throat of Palestine. Israel does not have the right to take and take and take. Israel has condemned itself. Silence teaches indifference. I don't want that lesson. It's our responsibility to make the world better, but first we need to know how it came to be this way. We need uncensored ethnic studies. Do not support discussion, um, do not suppress discussion of Palestine. Do not punish criticism of Israel. If there is courage in this town, if there is a spirit of free speech, then protect it. Protect and support our ethnic studies classes. So much has been taken from Palestine. Don't take away the truth too. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call Elizabeth T. Becker, followed by Nomota Abina, and then by Eliza. So we'll start with Elizabeth T. Becker, you have two minutes.
Uh, hi. Hi, my name is Elizabeth T. Becker, and I'm here addressing a communication about workforce housing project. Um, I'm really disturbed that nobody addressed the safety and learning impacts that high-rise construction is going to bring on the Longfellow School, which is a school repudiated for disadvantages already. Longfellow kids were thrown into a dilapidated, sorry. Longfellow kids were thrown into a rundown facility scheduled for overdue updates, including fire life safety, mechanical, air ventilation, and dilapidated windows. How are the children and teachers supposed to function with major construction directly matching school hours just a few yards away, separated only by walls of antique, single-pane windows? We were coerced into signing open-ended permission slips so our kids can have PE three blocks off-campus at a public facility across San Pablo Avenue, which is stressful enough. And now they'll also have to navigate around hauling trucks, cranes, scaffolding, and obstacles reducing visibility. Exactly what screening is going to ensure the safety of our kids when there's, when the school site is surrounded by literally hundreds of workers throughout the life of the project? We know that you had to move to BAS, you didn't have a choice. You know, you did what you had to do, but I'm imploring, like, please, can you work with the community to maybe see if we could find another place? Because I work in construction, I've been on these job sites. It's, I can't even express how disruptive it's going to be. It, it, that's it. So I wanted to say if anyone in the community wants to communicate with me, my name is Elizabeth T. Becker at Gmail. So we can start a dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Um, next I'd like to call Nomota Abina, followed by Eliza.
Hi, board. First, I wanted to thank all of the administrators, educators at Longfellow Middle School for their tireless dedication and hard work for our students. I'd like to thank the board for supplying pizza for our educators as well. And also wanted to remind you all that they only got 12 hours for doing a total re-haul move. So I'd like you guys to consider some kind of compensation for their time that they spent. I would like to thank Superintendent, addressed my other issue, which was going to be about the bussing and more communication, so thank you, thank you for adding zero period. That is extremely important and allows every student who wants to do music to be able to do that and to have well-needed supports. I wanted to thank you guys for the basketball hoops, and, and we are excited to see when you guys paint the four squares and we get our more benches for lunch. I know that, I, I believe they're on their way. I wanted to thank John for the first day chasing off the woman off of our campus. And, um, yeah, just, I, I'm full of gratitude, but I would just really ask that everyone keep communication up because when you're not informed, like I've talked to some families who hadn't heard, they did apply for the buses and hadn't heard and hadn't heard, that can be extremely stressful. So just keep up the good work.
Thank you. And our last in-person public comment will be Eliza.
Hi, my name is Eliza Noe, I'm commenting on the literacy report. As this is the final year of the LIP, BUSD should be focusing on tying it up in a bow. Out of 37 settlement actions, only eight have been completed. I urge the board to ask how the district will bring 27 actions to completion within the school year. Since there will be no more required, required monitoring next year, it will not serve our students just to remain on track. More specifically, the district has made minimal progress on providing middle school ELA teachers professional development and coaching on their tier-one curriculum. Yet there is only one sentence when, within today's report that addresses this requirement. On page five, it states, "We will also be conducting regular observations and feedback of Orton-Gillingham and Rewards instruction taking place in K through eight settings." So saying that, you're going to do something, is not the same as having a clear plan. I also urge the board to ask how the MTSS tiers will work together in the middle schools. The majority of the MTSS elements, from the use of Dibbles and EduClimer to the rewards program, is left to the intervention teachers. What are the ELA teachers going to be doing to collect data, to monitor progress, and to provide tier-one supplemental support? They have an essential role to play within the MTSS framework. Struggling readers need all the tiers to work seamlessly together in order to be effectively supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noe. Now we will move on to our online public comments. We have one hand raised. Ms. Chires, can you please promote Lindsay Nofel, and she will have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Nofel, and I'm speaking as a member of Reading for Berkeley. This is a comment on the most recent progress for, on the literacy improvement plan. There is so much promising evidence that the work BUSD has done so far is working, and we applaud that. Many more students are reading early and well, and with shifts in curriculum assessment, intervention programs, and progress monitoring, there's hope. But we have to put a, keep our foot on the gas. We have to pay attention to the unglamorous work of making sure that teachers have ample resources for this switch, that the system of support is robust and follows children through middle and high school, and to commit to transparent updates even after the settlement requirements have expired. We can't lose sight of the goals of the plan, and we need to say it in plain English. BUSD must teach all children to read, especially those who struggle, with evidence-based methods and intensive support when needed. We celebrate the work that's been done so far. We realize that achieving this goal requires a system that wasn't in place before the plan was agreed to. But in this last year of required reporting, the foundation is still shaky. A lot more work needs to be done to create a reliable, successful way to help both young and older readers. We look forward to hearing the update during the meeting, especially around how the programs for the two pilots were chosen. We hope that board members ask many questions. There's much to celebrate and much to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nofel. That now concludes the public comment period. Thank you to everyone who came to speak. If you did not get to speak, please remember that there's an extended public comment period at the end of the meeting. Additionally, you can always email the board directly at boardofed@berkeley.net, or you can contact us individually. Our information is posted on our website. Now we will move on to committee comments. Ms. Chires, do we have any union comments this evening?
Yes.
Do we have committee comments? Okay, let's start with the committee comments, and then we'll move on to the union comments. Is that committee here, Ms. Chires?
You're joining us.
Okay, great.
I'm not sure if it's my time, is it my time?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you. I think when the Zoom was doing the thing, I couldn't hear. Good evening, board directors, superintendent, and members of the Berkeley community. I'm here tonight to provide a brief update on the BUSD African-American Success Advisory Committee. My name is Casey Robinson, and I am a BUSD parent and an ASAC community member. Last meeting, we had an opportunity to introduce all of our members, and tonight, we're going to highlight a couple of upcoming events. On Wednesday, September 11th, we will have our next full committee meeting from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the very room that you all are in, and we welcome everyone to attend. As a reminder, on Saturday, September 14th, BUSD will be hosting the Third Annual Black-to-School Cookout at Willard Middle School. This is much more than a cookout. This is an opportunity for Berkeley students, Berkeley families, staff, and community to come together to support a strong start for our young people. There will be opportunities to learn more about important resources and programs available to ensure every student has a great school year. Research has shown that establishing strong connections with families at the start of the school year is crucial. When schools engage African-American families as partners in education, students feel more supported both at home and in school. Thank you for your time and attention, and we look forward to seeing you on Saturday, September 14th. Berkeley Together.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Chires, any additional comments?
Unless there's anyone here present, I'm not.
All right, then we'll move on to union comments. BFT.
Hello, Berkeley School Board Directors and Superintendent Ford-Morthel. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Our educators are very excited to start the new school year and have hit the ground running. School is off to a smooth start, and we can't wait to talk about the year ahead with our parents and guardians at all the upcoming back-to-school nights. One big endeavor this year is our literacy adoption process. I wanted to recognize all the hard work that has gone into its implementation. This is a top priority for our district, and having a great process will ensure success in our elementary classrooms. We have 29 educators representing all grade levels and elementary schools involved in piloting new curriculum. This is a huge undertaking for our teachers. These educators went through two days of training over the summer and met throughout last spring. It is through these pilots that our teachers can identify the pros and cons of various curricula and have rich discussions in order to make the best recommendation possible. The district's work over the past two years has our educators speaking the same language with regards to literacy, and there are more consistent practices occurring as a result. I want to credit both the district and our educators for taking part in this project. Our students will definitely benefit with improved practices and outcomes. I also want to recognize all the hard work from the district and our educators that went into moving multiple sites over the summer. Moving entire schools on such a short timeframe is quite a feat. Everyone has had to make sacrifices to make this work, but in the end, there has been no disruption to the start of the school year. Unfortunately, because of these moves, our educators unexpectedly had to put in many hours of work over the summer to make sure their classrooms were set up on time. The district's position so far on the packing and unpacking of classrooms during big moves definitely feels disrespectful. We all know it takes more than 12 hours to break down and set up a classroom. This is even more true when asked to completely empty a room or unpack a room where the stuff in the room may not even belong to you. At Longfellow, the average total time of packing and packing was 33 hours. This was multiple days of work before the school year began. The right thing to do is to make sure people are paid for work they are expected to do. It would be unacceptable to have a half-unpacked classroom on the first day of school. That would not be a welcoming environment for our students, but that is basically the district's position. The district needs to sit down and have this discussion with BFT. We are calling for a real shift of this board to actually treat employees in this district with dignity. We were dismayed to learn that there has been no shift from the district at the negotiations table. In fact, there's been no movement at all since the district's initial offer. Our district remains an unfortunate outlier when it comes to educator compensation. Districts with much higher attendance losses than BUSD still have managed to agree to increases that support the retention and recruitment of educators. As it stands now, this board supports a take-home pay cut for our educators come January and an even larger real income pay cut happening right now. Those of us with families are going to feel it the most with rising healthcare costs. This is a loud and clear message to our members and BUSD employees that this board and this district does not value our work, while at the same time is unable to hire credentialed educators in many job types and classes across our district. We really hope that the board and the district can come and sit with us with real proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Is the mic on, Ms.? Yeah? Can you guys hear me? All right. Thank you, President Meyer. Now we'll move on to board member comments. Thank you again for everyone who came out to speak to us. Before we start board member comments, I'd like to remind our colleagues to review our governance team commitments. Our full list of governance, governance team commitments can be found in our board meeting agendas. Let's be the best role models we can be for our students. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues who would like to start board member comments tonight. Director Chang?
Sure, I just want to say, um, good to see everybody and happy new school year. Aside from that, not much else. I'm, I'm seeing some, lots of relaxed faces here, some tanned. Hopefully, we maintain that as long as we can. And I also want to welcome the new student school board director. Very nice to meet you, and thanks for your service too. That's it for today, thank you.
Colleagues, who'd like to go next? Yes, student director Winter Clark.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, I'd like to begin by expressing my gratitude towards everyone who shared a public comment today. Just want to say that I recognize all of your comments about the ethnic studies program and the Longfellow relocation and the literacy action plan. So I just want to let you guys know that your voices and perspectives are incredibly valuable and are important towards making inclusive decisions for our community. Also, this past week and a half has been a significant time for Berkeley high school students. We've all been adjusting, whether it's returning to familiar routines or stepping into this environment for the very first time. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that transitions can be challenging, but I've witnessed an incredible resilience and adaptability from my fellow students. And so it fills me with pride to see how much we've come together and supported each other as we settle back into the school year. And as we move forward, I encourage everyone to continue embracing that spirit of community and perseverance. Um, I also wanted to highlight the many students who have been actively involved in voter registration. I truly believe that voter education is vital, especially with the recent implementation of Measure Y-1. Um, and so I'm working on developing a curriculum that not only teaches the mechanics of voting, but also helps students understand how the Berkeley voting system functions. but also helps students understand how the Berkeley voting system functions. I believe that in times like these, the knowledge is key to empowering our generation and making informed choices and shaping the future of our community. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Winter. I would like to go next.
I'll go. Welcome. I wasn't at your first school board meeting last time, so I do want to welcome you. And I'm so glad that you won. For those of you who don't know, she came to my office hours on time and said she was running. And the next thing I heard, she won, so. So excited to have you. I'm also excited to start this new school year. I was meeting and discussing with how we can expand our reusables at Berkeley High School. We could partner together on. And the icebreaker question was, tell us something exciting for you as the start of this new year. And our students were happy to be back with friends, excited about the teachers that they have this year. Our retired teacher, who continues to help us stay on track with moving our climate literacy work forward, Ms. Martha Kane, was excited to hear that Longfellow is serving breakfast with mesh bags instead of plastic bags. So kudos again to our kids who came to the school board member meeting with that recommendation. And thank you to the staff that heard and responded so quickly. My sharing was acknowledging the reduced number of complaints from parents and teachers that we had this year around school reopening from 2021 to now. I do want to acknowledge that it has not gone unnoticed. Many years ago, this boardroom would have still been packed with families who would have been complaining about needs that they still have among starting the new school year. So kudos to your team and for all that we are doing to really hear the comments and to address them. I was even more excited to receive the letter of gratitude from parents around Longfellow's opening at its new site this year. A quick excerpt from one says, "Thanks so much to all of you for your hard work, dedication, and cooperation to make this happen in such a short timeframe. I know I speak for many Longfellow families when I express my deep gratitude for your efforts on this." So bravo to the team. Thank you so much. I was so encouraged with the parents' report because I asked them to trust you. I asked them to believe that the new site would be better than they expected and that Longfellow would be ready for their return. And you didn't let anyone down, especially our students. Thank you to the adults who have so graciously taken all of these moves and additional work like the champions we aim to be for our kids. As we strive toward a Berkeley Together, I have a shirt which says, "Our community is brilliant, resilient, and strong." And that's not lip service. That is taking the actions necessary to be community, to put kids over politics, to put kids' needs over our own comfort, to listen to each other, to understand, and to work together to find solutions for everyone. Hashtag Berkeley Together. I'm excited about the ways in which we can show up with empathy for each other on every issue, just as Longfellow, the Berkeley Adult School, Bonnar Street, and Parker Street modeled in response to the sudden school site closure. This is the grit of who we are in Berkeley, and I am grateful. I want to rehash the announcement made by the African American Advisory Committee regarding our Black to School Day. Yes, we said Black to School Day. Sometimes we get emails saying it's a typo, but no, we mean it. It's sponsored by our African American Success Framework. And at this cookout, exactly what she said happened. It's a time for stronger connections, to really get to know about the different opportunities and leadership roles that you can take a part of and community services that are available for our families in Berkeley Unified. So we hope to see you all there on September 14th from 11:00 to 1:00 at Willard Middle School. And finally, I want to acknowledge our student that we lost from Berkeley Technology Academy. And I really want to send my support and message of condolences to the Berkeley's BTA family and of course, to the families and all of those who knew our beloved Kenny. Kenneth Hoff's name is his name. He attended Sylvia Mendez, Longfellow Berkeley High School, and most recently, BTA. Kenny and all his siblings attended BUSD schools, and his sister is now in the ninth grade at Berkeley High School. So we must keep their mother and their sisters in our prayers and in our thoughts. We must continue to help them through this time by donating to the GoFundMe. It's called Kenneth Hoff Rest in Power GoFundMe. Please look it up and give. And know that we will be celebrating the life of Kenny on Saturday, August 31st, 2024. The viewing will be at 10:00 AM, and the service will be at 11:00 AM. Our district staff and school site staff will be present, sending their condolences. Please send flowers and any mementos that you can because we know what it means when we wrap our arms around our families during these difficult times. And as has been our normal practice, we want to also honor his life with the moment of silence. So if you could, please join me at this time with the moment of silence. I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And then to end on a somewhat more positive note, absolute more positive note, I do want to also acknowledge Vote 16. And I'm so excited that we were able to make this happen this year and so excited that BUSD has done a great job on our website to give the information about how to register to vote. The Frequently Asked Questions section is very important. And so for all of you who have been asking, please check out our website. And once again, let's vote 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babett. Director Shinoski?
Sure, I just have a couple of quick updates. So I attended the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee meeting last night, and we talked quite a lot about updates regarding Longfellow. And I just want to share with the community that plans continue to, you know, modernize Longfellow, and the timeline feels very tight, but feels like we are on track with everything that we need to do. The modernization as well as all of the structural updates that were discovered that were needed. So that two-year timeline, John has said he feels confident that we're going to stick to it. So we're going to keep rolling forward. Thanks again to facilities, all the staff, all the administration for... John just gave me a look. For all the work that was involved in moving this summer and also the work that we have ahead of us to make sure that we're back in a timely fashion. I also was able to visit BTA this week. And so I'm really hopeful that this board will have a presentation in the future so that we can better understand how our BTA and our BIS students are integrated into the, you know, larger Berkeley High community and make sure that we're serving all of our students as well as we can. And that's it. Thanks.
Well, thank you to my wonderful colleagues and Director Babett for reiterating the information about Kenny's life and celebration of life ceremony. I know that many educators are hurting and many of his classmates are hurting. So thank you, Director Babett, for that. I just want to say I'm thrilled to see our students and educators back in our classrooms. I did want to send a reminder out to our parents and caregivers to please drive carefully near the streets surrounding our schools. We've received a couple of complaints from neighbors and know that there's been pretty bad driver behavior. And I know we have our amazing crossing guards here who keep our children safe and can also vouch that, you know, we really appreciate you when you drive safely and help us create a culture of safety around our schools, particularly for our students who are walking or biking and need to get across the street. So let's be the best neighbors that we can. And with that, we will move forward to approve the consent calendar. Can I have a motion, colleagues, to approve and a second to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
It's moved by Director Chang. Is there a second? Second, seconded by Director Shinoski. All directors who are present, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's or abstentions? Okay, great. We have now approved the consent calendar. One thing that I just wanted to call out is that BUSD's newly appointed Brea Director Lena Sweeney is here this evening, and we want to formally congratulate her and welcome her into her new role. And with that, I will move to our first and only item this evening, which is Discussion Item 13.1, the Literacy Action Plan Update and Quarter Eight Report. Who is introducing this item? Associate Superintendent.
Good evening, Board Superintendent, members of the public. We are excited this evening to present our update and report on the Literacy Action Plan. I am joined by a number of folks you see here, members of the Literacy Action Plan's Implementation Team, which is required by the settlement. These are some, but not all, representatives of that team. And so we've got... We'll have folks introduce themselves as we move along the presentation. As always, we want to make sure that we're grounding our work in our district's mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. We know that literacy is critical to that mission. Students need to be able to read. They need to be able to read on grade level in order to access all of the content and enable them to achieve that academic excellence. Our outcomes for this evening's presentation are to share our work to date to build and strengthen BUSD's assessment, infrastructure, and literacy system. We want to provide updates on the Literacy Action Plan, which was attached... The Quarter Eight Report was attached to this agenda item. And we want to outline our literacy focus for the work ahead for this current school year. We're going to ground this presentation in our Model for Improvement. Continuous improvement is an important part of this process. And while we look at these individual questions, both at a systems level, all the way to the classroom, we want to be clear that there are things that we are trying to improve with regard to literacy instruction, and particularly with regard to the outcomes our students have been achieving. So we are going to be focusing our presentation in the context of these three questions. What is it that we're trying to improve? What changes or actions might we take and why? And then how would we know that change or action led to improvement? What are we trying to improve? The Literacy Action Plan stems from our legal settlement. And the legal settlement outlines four goals for our literacy work. Goal one really is around improving reading instruction at our Tier One level. Goal two is to strengthen and use literacy interventions at Tier Two and Tier Three as part of a multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS. Goal three is around monitoring and supporting all implementation efforts. And goal four is to improve the quality of our IEP goals, our 504 plans, through progress monitoring and tiered supports. And as you saw from our LCAP work in the spring, we are moving as a district to internalizing a three-by-five goal. We want all of our efforts to result in at least 3% overall annual improvement in proficiency and 5% for our focal student populations. So really, our three-by-five is going to be the mantra this year as we're looking at any of our measures, but with particular for this presentation, for our literacy work. So what changes... So we've talked about what we're trying to improve, and what changes or actions might we take and why. We are looking at building and strengthening a literacy system. And you've seen part of this slide before, but in this context, we really are looking at a literacy system in three areas. Infrastructure, which involves professional learning, meaning the work that we're doing to build the capacity of our teachers and our school leaders to support literacy instruction, that we have valid and reliable assessments to measure student progress. This is really important because we need this information to identify what areas and instruction we need to focus on. We're also looking at capacity building. This is both in professional learning and coaching to help support and monitor progress, and our instructional resources. That is curriculum, but also the resource of time, how we're allocating instructional time to focus on the skills that students need to build a strong literacy foundation. So we're going to start here with these three areas of professional learning, valid and reliable assessments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our literacy coordinator, Ms. Rose James.
Thank you so much, Associate Superintendent. So as Jill mentioned, we are moving into... Oh, there it is. Our third year as an organization really focused on aligned professional development, building literacy systems and instruction. Whoops, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry, guys. Okay, here we go. So in our first year of our Literacy Action Plan, our site-based literacy coaches led a book study of shifting the balance. And the year-long study was focused on the science of reading and was very well received by our staff. Simultaneously, we conducted a thorough review with our stakeholders of our current programs in K-5 Language Arts using the first iteration of a rubric that you'll hear about later, developed by Dr. Gibbons at the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement, or CARRY. Evaluating our literacy programs with this rubric really helped us understand whether and to what extent our core programs' designs are aligned with the research on reading and writing development. And at the end, very end of year one, in May, we trained... We invested heavily in training our specialists with Orton-Gillingham approach, which is a multisensory, systematic, structured literacy approach, which was designed for students with dyslexia. So our first cohort, we trained 30 lit coaches, RTI, and sped practitioners. It was a week-long training. It was 30 hours. It was intensive. But they were ready to start the following year with implementation. And we've now trained over 90 practitioners at both the elementary and middle school level. And that includes both Orton-Gillingham and morphology, which is more of a secondary approach that focuses on more themes, which are meaningful words. During year two, as you've heard about in some of our previous presentations, we invested in a lot of training for our Tier One practitioners, our classroom teachers from TK all the way through eighth grade in all things reading. And as we shared with the board last year, our elementary educators participated in approximately 22 hours of professional learning, taking them through the Reading Academy from the Consortium on Reading Excellence. And they all got a heavy source book on the teaching of reading. Our middle school practitioners focused on vocabulary and comprehension for our ELA teachers and intensive intervention for our specialists. In 6-8, we also conducted an inventory of current supports for reading. This was last year. And used the data to determine efficacy and alignment with evidence for what works for adolescent readers. We elected to supplement our reading We elected to supplement our reading support classes with rewards, Orton-Gillingham and morphology, in addition to Wilson, which was already happening. Simultaneously, as we were doing this PD and developing a common language around foundational reading instruction and assessment through this shared learning, we began the process of researching and developing a process for our own language arts adoption that would be informed by that shared learning. And so in year two, in tier two and three, our specialists at each site were also receiving ongoing support, observations and feedback in that first year of implementation of Orton-Gillingham. This year, we're in year three, and we're really in a phase of defining the core practices that we will be implementing across schools and classrooms. And during this bridge year, we'll also be piloting curriculums to adopt in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which you will hear more about from Director Albeck later in this presentation. And we will be continuing to monitor and support the supplements to our reading support programs at the three middle schools, as well as the vocabulary and comprehension strategies that they learned about last year in the core training. Because of doing that core training, we have been able to identify common diagnostic assessments that we can use after we screen students to really identify their exact unfinished learning when it comes to reading. So this year, we are leading with a strong emphasis on using those diagnostic assessments to find out what students we need right away, provide it in tier one, and then adjust our instruction as we see based on their progress monitoring and the formative data. So I'm now going to pass it to our new, not our new, this is her second year, but our district literacy coach, Erica Carter, who has really been instrumental and been co-leading this work with me to say more about the assessment and instruction plan for literacy this year.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm going to take a quick second. My name is Erica Carter. I haven't met you before, so I wanted to introduce myself. I am a kindergarten first grade teacher by trade, and I'm beginning my second year in this role. And previous to this role, I was a teacher at Emerson Elementary School. So glad to be with you all tonight. So to improve the reading, the reading achievement for all students by strengthening our tier one instruction, we've created this reading diagnostic plan to guide K-eight teachers through the process of finding out what their students need as soon as they need it. This diagnostic plan will support teachers in collaboration with their site intervention team to pinpoint what unfinished learning their students have and what they can do within their tier one minutes to support their students. Teachers will start at the top of this diagnostic plan with the first step, which is to screen. So think of this step as a quick temperature check by using DIBELS and STAR assessments as universal screeners, which means all K-eight students will be screened. This screening assessment data will help teachers to identify students with unfinished learning who will benefit from additional support. The next step is to diagnose. This step is zooming in and taking a closer look at what students need. Based on the unfinished learning uncovered by Step One's data, in the screening data, teachers will use core inventory assessments as a tool to point the phonics needs of their students. Data from these diagnostic assessments will provide teachers with in-depth information about their student skills, so they can create learning goals based on their students' instructional needs, such as which letter sound spellings or phonemic awareness skills they need to target in small group instruction. Step three will be targeted teaching and progress monitoring. This is an ongoing step where we, as teachers, will ensure we are on target. Using evidence-based interventions matched to the students' learning goals, teachers will provide targeted teaching to meet student needs within the tier one setting. For progress monitoring, students will use data from DIBELS progress monitoring assessments to determine if the students are making adequate progress towards their learning goals and also how to adjust the dosage, intensity, or group size of instruction to continue to target students' identified skills, skill needs. To support our teachers in rolling out this assessment plan, our literacy coaches will be leading teachers through training throughout the school year about how to administer these assessments, as well as how to interpret the assessment data to create learning plans for their focal students. These assessment shifts not only will provide targeted data for educators, but will translate to instructional practices that will improve reading achievement for all students by strengthening our tier one instruction. We have a multitude of training and resources available for our teachers, and as the year rolls out, we will continue to support our teachers in implementing evidence-based instruction, instructional practices within their classrooms. Now sending it back to Ms. James to talk more about how this diagnostic assessment plan contributes to aligning our tiered systems.
So as we've been talking about, because of this aligned PD and training as well as resources, we created a binder for our teachers that we just unveiled last week. So all of our teachers and our specialists have an assessment binder to support them in implementing these assessments, as well as instructional routines. We, because these resources span all three tiers, we're really leveraging this same assessment protocol, both for our general education teachers as well as our students with IEPs and our, our special educator, special educators. And this will allow for our classroom teachers, our cost teams, our SPED case managers and our SSTs to all have common understanding around what data we use to guide our work and how to use it to start to target students' instructional needs and provide exactly what is needed as soon as it's needed. Ms. Sweeney and Executive Director Mansiger are now going to talk more about how this work is informing both goal writing and supporting our students with IEPs and with reading challenges.
I think we may have skipped a couple of slides, but that's okay.
Nope, did we?
Who's doing the lining line?
Oh, sorry. That was supposed to be me.
Oh, alright.
That was, sorry.
That was beautiful. Good evening. I'm Sean Mansiger, the Executive Director of Special Education. And we have our colleague, Anne Sue.
Hi, I'm Lena Sweeney. Nice to be with you.
So I just first want to say how much of a pleasure it has been to work with, across, with our general education colleagues. The Literacy Action Plan has really helped us congeal more and really come together around an MTSS model. So it's, it's been, we have a really good team up here, and I'm very proud of them. Plus, the folks that are also working with us that are not here right now. So one of our large goals, number four, for the Literacy Action Plan, was improving our IEP goals and progress monitoring for reading intervention. So we have regular professional learning communities for our special education teachers that take place monthly, as well as we have check-ins and coaching from our case managers at our TSAs, working closely with the site to ensure that they are using DIBELS as, in creation of their IEP goals, and that they're using DIBELS as well the other data points for progress monitoring, so that we can show in a clear way to our families and to our students that they are progressing in their goals, or if we need to shift goals or services. We continue to monitor upcoming IEPs and reinforce the use of DIBELS and STAR in our IEP goals with identified reading challenges. This work has always been happening, but it's more focused now with our DIBELS and being able to have a common data points that we can all look at. We've made some pretty remarkable progress over the year. For, this graph exemplifies the percent of IEPs with reading goals that are using double STAR for 2024. The red line there is elementary school. And you can see we increased from, reading goals from three percent in fall of 2024 to sixty percent in spring of 2024. And then for, for results in May of 2024, sixty percent of our elementary IEPs for students with reading challenges used STAR DIBELS and fifty-seven percent for middle school. So we met our goals, and we definitely are going to shoot higher than that this year. So we're saying we want to shoot for eighty percent of elementary and middle school students that have reading challenges have a STAR DIBELS goal, and it's regularly, regularly being progress monitored so that we can adapt our instruction along the way.
Well, we'll fix that typo, it's supposed to be fall twenty twenty-three. Yep, so that was a pretty significant increase. So this is an example of the types of implementation data that we've been trying to track to determine, are we doing the things that we said we were going to do to help improve our whole literacy system? And we're also want to acknowledge that we're looking at, how do we know that change led to an improvement? We're going to take a look at a couple of data slides, but before I go to the next slide, I want to just make the public service announcement. This is not the CASP data. These are going to be our internal benchmark data. We'll be looking at the CASP data. They're currently embargoed, and we'll be coming back to the board for a presentation on that. So we're going to look at our internal benchmark, screening assessment data for STAR and DIBELS in the elementary grades. The Quarter Eight Report also contains slides for grade six or seven, but in the interest of time, we're going to focus on the elementary grades. And so remember, we've got the three by five goal, three percent overall improvement in proficiency and five percent for focal student groups. And these bars represent the three administrations of our screening assessment last year, fall, winter and spring, for matched cohort, meaning students who took the, the assessment at all three assessment windows. And what you'll see here, it was working, Liz. Look, should have like drama. There we go. Ah, now back. Okay. And what you'll see here is that of the students with all three scores, eighty-five percent scored at or above benchmark, this is for our K-two student group, in spring of 2024, which was an eighteen percent increase from fall of 2023. So when we're looking at that overall three percent target, it's supposed to be my arrow, we met the target. So did we meet the three percent target overall? The answer to that was yes. So I want to keep in mind that we did not set those three by five targets at the beginning of last year. Those were coming out of the LCAP work in the spring. But again, we want to orient folks to really thinking about how we are, are, are looking at an accelerated target for our focal student groups. When we look at the focal student populations for our K-two, K-two students, it's not. Okay, um, sorry, go to back, it keeps going on. And these are, again, the DIBELS composite scores for great students in grades two. And you can see that the fall to spring change for our African-American students was pretty significant. Twenty percent at kindergarten, twenty-six percent at first grade, eleven percent at second grade. And then similarly, for our Latinx student population, increases from fall to spring over twenty percent, and then a little bit lower for the second grade. And also for our program groups, our special education, our students identified with IEPs, our English language learners and our Latinx English language learners. So again, you see that we, we did hit a, at least a five percent increase, with the exception of our second grade Latinx, Spanish-speaking English language learners. When we turn our attention to the STAR reading assessment for grades three through five of the students with matched scores, meaning they took the assessment across all three administrations, seventy-six percent of students scored at or above benchmark in spring of 2024, which was a three percent increase from fall of 2023. So not, again, not as significant of a shift for our upper grades, but we still met that three percent target. Across our focal student populations, you can see that with, with some of them, we met that five percent target. Others, we didn't. So these are areas that we'll definitely be paying attention to as we head into the school year. And then similarly, for our program groups, you can see that there were some significant gains for, for our third grade group in particular, and then some, some negative numbers there for our upper grades. So this is an area that we're going to need to continue to pay attention to. But again, it does speak to the literacy infrastructure that we've worked to implement in terms of effectively assessing our students, identifying them for additional support, having trained our teachers and our site specialists in those interventions, and then to make sure that we're implementing them along the way. And so we are now going to turn our attention to the focus areas that we have for the coming school year, and I'm going to turn it over to Director Albeck. And the clicker's not, can't get the clicker to work. Yeah.
Next slide, please. So tagging on to that, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here and having us. What I think is most important in the data that Ms. Hogan and I just shared is we are seeing some aspects of accelerated growth without a core curriculum that we know is aligned with the science of reading. So if we're able to see acceleration without a core curriculum aligned, then we are very much looking forward to seeing what can happen once we know that we have the instructional materials in the hands of our teachers, right? So we've been supplementing, knowing that we do have some gaps in our curriculum. And also at the same time, because we are building a literacy system and doing more than just the curriculum, we are seeing some growth already, which is very exciting. And now we want to talk about our curriculum adoption. Next slide, please. So as you can see on the slide before you, much progress has been made on our K-five Language Arts adoption process since we last presented to you in the spring. In the next few slides, we will review our process up to date, and then we'll take a look at what lies ahead. Next slide, please. In our K-five Language Arts adoption process, engaging with the community has been an intentional and important component. Up to this point, we have held two community listening sessions in which we hosted thirty-plus members of the BUSD community, some of them here tonight. In addition, we have hosted three focus groups, listening sessions. In February, during our first session, we gathered community priorities and helped to inform our instructional vision. By May, we shared a draft of our literacy instructional vision and conducted focus groups with African-American families, families of students with special needs, and families of multilingual learners to get gathered targeted feedback. These sessions have been invaluable in ensuring our adoption process reflects the needs and aspirations of our students and their families. Next slide, please. Equally important is the work that we have done with BUSD teachers and specialists who compose our adoption committee. Our Language Arts Adoption Committee is representative of BUSD elementary teachers across all schools, grade levels and specialist areas. We have general education teachers at every grade level, special education case managers, RTI TSAs, administrators and literacy coaches on our committee. Further, we have an entire Sylvia Mendez adoption team, looking at both instructional materials in English and in Spanish. Throughout the spring and summer, our adoption team has shared their priorities, reviewed BUSD data, co-created a literacy instruction framework, reviewed curriculums under consideration, been trained on our first pilot curriculum, and as of this week, begun the significant responsibility of developing the way we teach literacy in BUSD by implementing our first pilot curriculum. Next slide, please. The literacy instructional framework is our foundation for what we are looking for in our future curriculum. Like stated previously, this framework was created with our BUSD community, for our BUSD students and our teachers. Our framework states that we in Berkeley Unified District believe that literacy is a fundamental, fundamental human right and empowers individuals to engage in meaningful civic life, challenge inequities and shape their own destinies. We commit to providing a rigorous, research-aligned literacy instruction through the grades so that all of our students can build their own literacy skills to make positive contributions to the world. Next slide, please. In effort to ensure the curriculums under consideration were thoroughly researched and vetted, we worked with our independent consultant through the Literacy Action Plan, Dr. Kim Gibbons from the Center of Applied Research and Educational Improvement out of the University of Minnesota. And we leveraged her center's national review of its language arts curriculums. In her review, forty-two curriculums were reviewed by thirty-two individuals with expertise in the areas of literacy instruction. In this review, which overtook over eleven thousand hours, all forty-two curriculums at all grade levels were reviewed for look-forers and evidence-based practices aligned with the science of reading. They will also look for red flags practices that were not aligned with the science of reading. As a result of the review, their approved core instructional programs that you see on the slide before you were finalized. These are the same programs that when we reviewed our own localized look-forers grounded on our instructional vision that we considered. It is essential to note that despite this approved list, each of the programs I- each of the programs identified on this list did have opportunities for improvement as it relates to being culturally and linguistically responsive. We know that there is no perfect curriculum, but we also know that as a community in Berkeley, a culturally and linguistically relevant and responsive curriculum, a curriculum that reflects our BUSD students is an imperative in our next language arts curriculum. With that being said, as an adoption committee, we also included a sixth curriculum named Fish Tank as one to consider for its stands out for its strengths around cultural relevance and responsiveness. Next slide, please. With the six curriculums previously spoken about as our starting point, our adoption committee then completed a two-stage review process of the six curriculums under consideration. In the first stage, we brought the pilot committee together to hear publisher presentations and review instructional materials. During this time, our committee rated the programs based on the four look fours that came out of our own instructional framework, cultural relevance and joy, rigor and knowledge building, universal access, and purposeful skills. Two weeks later, we brought the committee back together again for a deeper dive into each curriculum where we completed a level two program analysis by reviewing instructional materials at a deeper level while tagging evidence and entering ratings on an evaluation instrument. Finally, we conducted a collaborative consensus-making process, which resulted in a decision to have two pilot cycles during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. One, a comprehensive curriculum, EL education, and the second pilot cycle being a matched foundational skills curriculum, functional phonics and morphology, and a knowledge building curriculum, Fish Tank. Next slide, please. Between now and the spring, there is a lot of work still to be done. However, our pilot is off to a great start, and many BUSD classes with piloting teachers have already began the commendable work of transitioning what they have been teaching and how they have been teaching with our first pilot unit. In the time being, we will support our piloting teachers with office hours, providing lab classroom learning days, asking our teachers to use an evaluation instrument to document their and our BUSD students' experience with the curriculums. In addition, we will continue to engage our site leaders, BUSD community, and other stakeholders throughout the year. As you have heard in this presentation, we are not just adopting a curriculum. We are building an entire literacy system. With this, we recognize there are other components of the Literacy Action Plan that we would like to speak to before closing out this evening.
Yep. So in addition to the curriculum, we continue to hold focus on all of the action items in the Literacy Action Plan, with a particular attention this year on the six items that Mr. Ellis had identified as minimal progress. One thing that he had shared in his report to the board that these six items are complex because they contain multiple parts. So you'll see a lot of ands, you'll see other coordination efforts. So while we have been on track to completing a lot of actions contained, a lot of the items contained within these actions, our goal is to ensure that we're achieving all of the components of the actions as outlined in the course of this this last year of the settlement agreement. All right. And then on our last slide, we just want to make sure that members of the public are aware that we have a lot of information about our literacy work on our district's website page. You can see that link here, and we want to extend an invitation to everybody here and the public for our next community listening session scheduled for September twenty-fifth. That information is here, and we will be sharing that more broadly. And with that, we will conclude our presentation and take questions from the board. Thank you very much, colleagues. This is a discussion. So who would like to start? Director Shunaski.
I have a bunch of questions, so I don't know. I can ask a couple, and then I can turn it over. First, I would like to ask about one of the questions that was posed in public comment, and that is about the integration of the tiers and how that's going to work. So I I did hear about the tiers specifically, but what is the plan to make sure that those, you know, that that instruction is really integrated together and seamlessly?
So a little earlier, Ms. Carter shared our diagnostic plan and how the data now that teachers are collecting is now the same data that our sped teachers have been collecting for the past year. For the last fifteen or more years, we had been using running record leveled assessments that generated A through Z levels, and that was sort of the language around reading assessment that our teachers were using. And now we're both both our tiers and all of our practitioners have really shifted to the same data sets and the same kind of units, if you will.
Next question. Says it.
Oh, I just wanted to add that moreover, now our elementary schools can speak to our middle schools using the same data set. So before we we used one set of data in elementary schools and another in middle school, and there was no kind of translation there, and that that's been transformative for us, particularly in our our transition meetings from fifth to sixth grade, speaking about students with IEPs. We're now using the exact same data sets to speak, and 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 that's that's been important in this change as well.
I would just add one last thing, that we are also working on strengthening our cost teams, which really are the teams at the sites that are looking closely at the data, identifying if students need additional supports, identifying if there's possibility of of an IEP evaluation or a student success team. So we are, we're, we continue to look at our systems in order to to keep this moving forward.
My second question is around coaching. So I saw the slide on coaching, and there was some mention of coaching specifically in our elementary schools. But I had concerns before that our coaching was actually more more, our coaches were being utilized more as sort of intervention specialists and not going into classrooms to really support teachers in this new way of assessing, this new way of teaching and learning. So is am I correct when I was reading that slide that there has been a real shift in the model of coaching and that we are focusing our coaches more on actual coaching in the classrooms?
Yeah, I think the sort of implementation focus this year really necessitates our coaches making sure that the practices are happening in the classroom, and they need the support of our site leaders, right? And so Chris and I will be working with site principals to make sure that, you know, we're creating structures for both accountability, but also support for our educators as they make these transitions and practices.
And the one thing that adds to that is as we bring in a new curriculum, that coaching and support is going to be even more important. So we are incredibly lucky and fortunate that BSEP helps support each of our sites having a site-based literacy coach, and that is a big opportunity for us. And at this time, our site interventionists are providing a lot of intervention, but as we shift to a new curriculum, they're going to be, a lot of the responsibility is going to shift back towards that coaching model, providing model lessons, observing, providing feedback, and making sure that whichever direction we move in is implemented with fidelity and is implemented with support.
Great. And then one last sort of. Sure.
Director Bobbitt.
Just to follow up, while I agree that the coaching is essential and important, we were having that additional direct support offered by our coaches to really help the students firsthand. And so what are we doing now to to fill that hole for the needed direct service that if it's been shifted?
So I think part of the reason for really thinking about being those diagnostic assessments in teachers' hands is so that they can provide that targeted support in tier one. And the structures that we have for that is the small group work that happens. We're calling it targeted small focal student work, and we're asking teachers to actually have that on their schedules so that we're really, you know, making sure that every child is getting that targeted instruction they need in in the classroom in that first teach.
Okay, my last, yeah, sorry. My last question is about, well, it's a couple of questions about the data. So we're looking at that DIBELS data. I think it's slide seventeen, eighteen, around there, I think I saw. That eighteen percent increase is phenomenal, but the the title of the slide is is what we're doing, working, right? And how do we know? And I'm just wondering, or how will we know if a change or action led to improvement? I'm just wondering if we've actually looked at that. Okay, so you have an eighteen percent increase from fall to spring, but what about last year when we were doing things differently? What was that increase? Because often we have that increase through the year, right, as students are getting instruction. But I'm just wondering if we've ever compared like the year-to-year change? I think it would be really interesting just to look at. I don't expect you to know it off the top of your head. And then the other thing about the data that maybe I should know this, but I don't really understand why there's such a marked difference between the DIBELS results and the STAR results, like that seems. So what do we think about these assessment tools? What do we think about the fidelity of those numbers? And why are they so different? Or do you have an idea of why they're so different?
So we we have looked at year-over-year growth, and we saw a very positive trend. The last three years, the number of the the growth we've seen in proficiency has been increasing over the last three years. So that's very positive. To your second question, STAR is, you know, a predictor of SBAK, right? It's not a guarantee, but it's also heavily dependent on things like vocabulary and background knowledge. It's asking multiple choice questions. It asks students to read a passage and then asks them a question about the passage. And so, you know, while DIBELS, those are dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills, STAR is much more of a kind of, I would say, comprehensive assessment of comprehension and heavily dependent on vocabulary. So for a thing for like our multilingual learners who may not haven't built up as large of an academic vocabulary, tier two words, they they are going to have a harder time getting passing STAR. So that's work that we're really thinking about, and it's again, something that when we look at an adoption, we want to make sure that there's a lot of structured language support for students and really strong comprehension practices.
What does that look like year-over-year? Has it, is it hovering about where it was before, or has it improved as well?
The STAR.
Mm-hmm. Just if you know offhand, it's, okay. I'll follow up with a question because I'm just curious. Thank you.
Can I just add, just just to remind the board and the public that we are still very young in our assessment practices, meaning that are the fact that we even have a consistent and coherent way of assessing our students, you know, my different than just even talking about intervention in tier one, et cetera. Just the fact that we have a common tool that the majority of our educators are using, and then we're actually able to have the same vocabulary is still relatively new. We do, as Rose said, do the year-over-year, and we can now play with data in different ways because we have EduClimber. But there's still a lot for us to learn in terms of of impact because us having common data to even analyze is still very much in its infancy. But we do ask those same questions and are excited to have the discussion with you all going forward about what that data looks like and why we think the data looks how it does.
Director Bobbitt.
Yes. Well, first, I just want to say thank you for agendizing this as a discussion item so that we can actually really interact more with the information. We know that our community asked for it, and so thank you for responding. My question is also around collaboration with our after-school staff, with our bill tutors. We know that working together, you know, through this pilot plan will make them even stronger, whatever we decide to roll out. So how do we also plan to collect their feedback and to make sure that they are on track with them being a part of the training, teaching, and learning process?
I could speak to how, so we have, we have our pilot committee, and our pilot committee is representative of all school sites and of different staff members. But one thing that we have been really purposeful on is at the end of each of our sessions together is providing each of our piloting teachers and staff members with talking points and with things to go back to their communities to share, right? So like we asked that after we reviewed the curriculums on the CARRY report, and we reviewed how Dr. Gibbons and her center went about reviewing these curriculums and the information that they got very, you know, firsthand from from us and from also Dr. Gibbons, that then they would have an opportunity at their school sites during their Wednesday PDs, when hopefully more staff is in that space, folks that aren't directly a part of the adoption committee can be getting information and be providing some feedback that they then they can bring back to our committee. That has sort of been our process, right? Because it is a challenge to make sure that every single stakeholder in BUSD is getting the information and is providing their their input. And I feel like we are doing our due diligence to try to just get as much, and there's areas of growth and other ways that we can go about doing that. But we, I hope through the process, that our community is feeling that there is an opportunity for voices to be heard and for their opinions to be shared.
I think also just with regard to our after-school program and tutoring, that is an area that we have, we've had on the list of things to do, but haven't been quite quite there yet. So I had started and engaged in a couple of conversations with our after-school program managers. We know that we do have students who are there for after-school and that there's been a shift to be thinking about what types of academic supports we can provide during that after-school time. So that's definitely on on the radar, but we haven't taken concrete steps, concrete steps in that direction yet.
Great. I would love to hear the plan to make that a reality because if we adopt a new curriculum and then we haven't, you know, really heard from them or trained them, do want to acknowledge that most of our after-school staff, they're not a part of the PDs on Wednesdays because they are already doing the after-school work. So we do need to be really intentional about that piece of collaboration because the way effective after-school programs work, in my view, is it is an extension of the learning day, right? So it's essentially more instructional minutes that can be offered. And if they're on a different track, I'm sure you know, than the classroom, we're not actually getting the full benefits of that. I'm also curious about why the third through fifth grade didn't see as significant increases or results as the K through second.
I think those are areas that we're going to need to continue to explore any time that, you know, as we're building our own data infrastructure in routine, we want to, we're trying to do that consistently, both with our site principals alongside of our school specialists to really understand, like, what is it that we predicted were going to happen? And then what do we see in the results? And then why do we think it happened? So if we're seeing growth, why did we, why do we think that happened? And if we're not seeing the growth that we would have anticipated, why is that happening? So these data are relatively new. We haven't had an opportunity to engage in those structured conversations. I think we've got some thoughts and process about that. But, you know, we really want to move to a space where we call it, we're not being lucky with our results, we're being leading with our results because we know what's happening. And so there has been focused attention in the early grades in particular because we knew that there was a gap in the intervention support materials that we had for them. We invested a lot of resources in training our specialists to address that. And so it wasn't necessarily a surprise that we saw greater gains in the primary grades than that that secondary group or the upper elementary group. But we still have some unpacking to do to be able to answer that question more clearly.
And I think that's why the looking at implementation data is just as important as looking at impact data because at this point, again, because us having even common ways to talk about and look at and collect data, it is still very much in the theory phase. It's going to take some years for us to be sure, like, it's because we did X. But if we're not documenting and tracking what we're doing, PD, coaching, instructional practices, and then monitoring that, we really will just be guessing. And so, again, this is year three of work that really kicked off, I would say, last year even because we were building foundation. We still have more foundation to build, but just want to be really transparent and not have folks to to. Have folks to, to walk away thinking that because we've seen improvements or because we still see areas of focus and need. We already know why those things exist. We have theories, we explore those theories, we try something again. We continue with our practice, but we, we won't be sure. We're talking about human beings, very dynamic situation. We, we won't be sure, honestly, change takes three to five years. And so just want to be really clear. About that. We have some ideas of why what we're doing is working and that it is what we're doing and that's actually leading to the outcomes. But we're still going to have to really take an inquiry stance, if you will, and really position ourselves to be learners as an organization.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, team, but we're also strengthening our assessment. Our Dibbles intervention at the upper grade levels as well. We're evolving, moving up our screener so that we can look more closely at our third, fourth and fifth graders as well.
Thank you, Sean. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and then I'll go on another round, colleagues. I know this topic is something we're really passionate about. So I just had a couple, well, thank you. I'm listening to your explanations, Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke, that we're still kind of figuring out why the score, you know, the, the metrics. Look the way that they look and we can't make specific correlations. But one thing that stood out to me was the STAR reading for Latinx E Ls and just seeing those declines there where, you know. Particularly from the third to the fifth grade level, right? And it was just the fourth and fifth grade, those upper elementary school grades. I'm curious, right? If we've disaggregated that data kind of by site, if, if there's a way to see like, does that differ at like Mendez, for example, and at the other sites? And I know it's hard to say like, it's because we're doing this specific thing at Mendez is working. But I know that we had a presentation, I think it was like two years ago on the Latinx resolution, we looked at literacy data across sites disaggregated by sites. And those scores are very different. And so I'm curious if that's kind of happening in the background. And also. Yeah, if there's, I know there's going to be an upcoming event, but. An upcoming listening session, but if we're targeting that population too, and making sure that we're inviting multilingual learners based on the preliminary data that we have here. To explain what's happening and to kind of get their feedback as well. And so to answer the first question, we will be looking at this, these same data points with our school site principals first. So that will be coming up at an. An upcoming, but we've scheduled the date, September fourth. And from there, school principal, principals will engage in those conversations with their school based teams. Relative to our community events, we have been intentional about extending invitations to our multilingual learner families in particular. We have utilized the interpretation services at our last couple of events, meaning that. We had members of our Spanish speaking community who were in attendance. So that has been an intention for our community engagement work.
That's great. And I'd love, you know, I haven't received any information from Alejandra in Spanish, but I think. Sending it out in Spanish would be great to our Spanish speaking families. And another question that I had, and I think it was for Director Albrecht, is when is the earliest that we can, that would make sense for the board to hear like progress on some of the pilots that are happening? Do we have to wait until like two years out, like next year? Like when's the earliest that you could come back with some preliminary data on how the pilots are going?
If it could, if it were to be helpful, I could put things into Friday notes pretty regularly. I'm not sure exactly when we'll be coming back to present in front of the board, but things in Friday notes regularly throughout the year.
Great, thank you. And directors, does anyone have additional questions? Sorry if I killed your excitement, Director Shunaski, Director Bobbitt.
Yeah, according to the timeline, we should definitely be able to weigh in before. A couple of years on, on, on how the pilot program is going. So. As long as we stick to that, we should be. At least closer to on track. But what I would like to ask now is about cultural relevance and cultural competency training during this process. How the work that we're doing with our vision schools. Through our African American success framework is being incorporated in this project. Because we know with our C S A's plan and with our L cap plan and our focal students and as a part of our overall goals. What are we doing to really? Keep that at also the forefront of the conversation because we know that. How students are being engaged is also extremely important with any curriculum.
So I think I would, I would actually go back to the literacy framework. I think that the, the concepts that you are talking of really surfaced in, in the course of those conversations. We recognize the importance of that culturally and linguistically responsive pedagogy and practices. And it's important because we know that we still have some significant achievement gaps, particularly for our African American students. And our Spanish speaking, English language learners that need to be addressed. We know that students need to see themselves represented in this work and that is part of the reason why. We needed to consider and the fish tank curriculum because it was an area. That did not come out as strong in the other nationally reviewed curriculum through that carry report. And so I do think that those, you're also talking about the, the pedagogy and the practices in. In the context of how instruction takes place in the classroom. It's one thing to have the curriculum. It's the teaching practices to deliver the curriculum that become an important component of that. And I will say that those are, those are at the forefront as we're looking at not just piloting the curriculum. But thinking about what does that training look like? Once we roll that out, we've definitely heard that feedback from some of our educational partners. And how we're thinking about once we've got a curriculum, what's the training and support? That will happen to ensure that we can implement that with fidelity alongside of looking at our instructional practices that meet the need of our culturally diverse student population.
Thank you. I would just ask also that in future presentations that we also keep that at the forefront. I'm very concerned about it being a one off or a, you know, a book study or a, a. Wait, in time training instead of being the consistent coaching, consistent monitoring. And reminding of how important that is. So if we could be intentional about that in our. Report back or updates to the board, I think that would also be helpful. And then lastly, thinking about what our public commenter talked about as far as the big picture, right? How are we going to monitor this going forward when our court monitoring is suspended? What are our plans to make sure we move this forward? If it's not this presentation, just to be mindful of us starting that prep work now. Because we know that that has been important in keeping. Keeping us on track and keeping the, the independent, transparent monitoring going. So having a plan for that, I think, is critical. And thank you all, the public commentators for bringing that to our attention.
Well, thank you for this presentation and this concludes all of our agenda items for this evening's meeting. My birthday again. We will now move, move to fifteen minutes of extended public comments. Is there anyone in the audience here for public comment? Ms. Harris, do you have any public comment cards?
No, there's here, there's one here in person and then we have another one online.
Great. So for our in-person public commenter, we'll give her two minutes. This, Ms. Snow.
So thank you for asking about the M T S S and how that's going to be aligned and integrated. I'm grateful for the responses from, from the implementation team. However. The majority of their responses, I don't know if you noticed, only addressed elementary school. The schools did not at all mention middle schools. How are those tiers going to be aligned in the middle schools? I don't know if you noticed also in the, the slide presentation, the two slides focusing on this air, this, this section. Particularly the slides on training on diagnostic assessment analysis and planning, planning for instruction. And the slide on instructional practices map, they only cover elementary school there as well. So this is our final year. They really need to have a clear plan. What are they going to do about middle school?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Now we will move on to our online public commenters. We have one hand up for online public comment. Danielle McKee, Ms. Harris, can you promote Danielle for two minutes? Mr. Ricky, you declined to be promoted. Okay, well, seeing no other. Seeing no other online speakers, now we will move on to extended board comments. Colleagues, does anyone have extended board comment, call it, comments tonight? Nope. Seeing no extended board comments. I want to thank you for coming out to this meeting. The meeting of the Berkeley School Board of Education is hereby adjourned at nine twenty P M. Thank you.